Thank you for joining us this evening. If you'll please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you again for joining us this evening. Our first order of business is to excuse Vice President Bradford from the meeting. She had a family matter to take care of.
Second.
Second. So move to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Next, we will adopt our agenda for this evening. Can we get a motion?
I move that we adopt tonight's agenda.
Second.
Uh, move to second. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Uh, next, are there any scouts in the audience? I know we have several students who might be here for choir, but I was just wondering. Oh, there's a scout back there. Did you want to introduce yourself and tell us your school and if you're working on a batch?
What's your name?
Bennett. Cascade.
Cascade.
I'm in the middle of like changing my voice or something.
Oh, okay.
Do you have a sibling singing tonight?
Yes.
We're glad you're here. Thank you. All right. Well, I'm going to, uh, the next, um, on our agenda is special recognition is school board appreciation month. I guess month of January. I guess we'll take the whole month, right?
Yeah. Uh, we understood that it was because of all the signs around the room tonight. We don't always have those signs. So we, we have two things happening. One is a proclamation that will be read, uh, that will be very exciting, and I'll do that in a minute. But before that, I am going to welcome Corinne Ormsen, our performing arts, music, PE, and all of the above specialists to introduce a choir that's going to sing a song to the school board.
All right. Do you want to just, you go down.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. It's an honor to bring some music to your meeting for this special, special board meeting. There are so many reasons to participate in the arts. It builds teamwork, improves stamina, find motor skills. We know students do better academically when they're involved in the arts. But tonight, we really want you to just enjoy the music for, for the arts sake, for the beauty and the joy that it brings to you and that obviously brings to the students. So this is the Cascade Treble Choir from Cascade Middle School. And they have received a big honor this year. They auditioned for and were accepted to the Northwest Conference Choral Directors Conference. So there's only seven divisions in the United States, and this middle school choir was selected to perform. So they're headed to Spokane in March to do that, and they're very excited. So to introduce their song tonight, Reese and Belle. Do you have to just take a step forward?
Don't be shy. We don't bite. We promise.
Um, so yeah, we're the Cascade Treble Choir, but we're only part of it. Uh, we have, we're like way bigger, so this is just what we could bring today. Today, we're singing Symphony of the Heart, and it's about, um, coming together as a group or family, no matter your race or what you look like.
And the last thing, their director is Kim Clausen, who's back here with her son-holds.
(Singing) In my heart, I can hear it. Hear it. In my heart, I can hear it. Hear it. In my heart, I can hear it. Hear it. In my heart, I can hear it. I hear a symphony. All of the instruments are playing the same song. As different as they may be, they all work together in harmony. Imagine the world as a symphony. In my heart, I can hear it. Hear it. See it in my heart, I can hear it. I hear a symphony. Oh, in my heart, I can hear it. I hear a symphony. All of the instruments are playing the same song. As different as they may be, they all work together in harmony. Imagine the world as a symphony. Hear the voices they play across the street. The moments and the verses, they all begin to sing. I hear the percussion with the rhythm for me. It's a message of unity. In my heart, I can hear it. Hear it. In my heart, I can hear it. Hear it. I can hear it. Hear it. In my heart, I can hear it. I hear a symphony. All of the instruments are playing the same song. As different as they may be, they all work together in harmony. Imagine the world as a symphony. Over and over and over and over and over and over again, I hear it. Over and over and over and over and over and over again, I hear it. Over and over and over and over and over and over again, I hear it. Over and over and over and over and over and over again, I hear it. Imagine the world as a symphony.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
And congratulations on your award and your upcoming competition is Spokane.
Thank you.
And thanks to, uh, Kim. Appreciate it, coming out.
Thank you.
Great to see that little one did well.
He was with us last year.
Yeah, I remember it. Yeah. Yeah. So, uh, I know how much you, the board in the past has always loved having music. I also want to thank Gail in coordinating that with Corinne to make sure that we had somebody here. So that was great. Uh, now to the, I mean, the kids are great and all, but I know you've been waiting a whole year for this proclamation. So I'm going to read you the proclamation. This is from the governor's office. Correct, Lori? Uh, whereas the mission of Washington's public school system is to assure that all students achieve at high levels and possess the knowledge and skills to be responsible citizens of a democratic society who enjoy productive and satisfying lives and whereas Washington's 295 locally elected school boards and nine elected educational service district boards are the core of the public education governance system in our state and whereas the districts and regions they lead serve more than 1 million students, have a combined annual budget of over $15 billion, and employ approximately 120,000 people. And whereas school directors play a crucial role in promoting student learning and achievement by creating a vision, establishing policies and budgets, and setting clear standards of accountability for all involved. And whereas school directors are directly accountable to the citizens in their districts and regions serving as a vital link between members of the community and their schools. And whereas school directors and educational service districts provide a passionate voice of advocacy for public schools and the welfare of school children. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize school directors as outstanding volunteers and champions for public education. Now, therefore, I, J. Inslee, Governor of the State of Washington, do hereby proclaim January 20th, January 2020, as a school board recognition month in Washington. And I encourage all people in our state to join me in this special observance. Signed, this 18th day of December 2019, Governor J. Inslee. And I, I guess I would say, um, obviously that says a lot, and it's all, I kind of joke around with it, but you all, uh, put in a tremendous amount of time. You all face a lot of challenges in the job that you do. For the thanks in many respects that you just got tonight, a song or a sign or somebody seeing you in a grocery store saying, why the heck did you go two hours late on Friday? Or, I mean, any number of these things. Uh, I feel, uh, thankful to work with the, and Victoria's not here tonight, but all five of you as board members. I feel like we're a real solid team. We even have some Olympic, in case you want to come later to get an opportunity to see some pictures of some Olympic skiers with heads on them. Um, you can come back and look at that a little bit, but I just want to let you know how much I appreciate working with you. And I've said this a couple of times, thinking about the last year plus and some of the challenges that the district has gone through. Um, from, I mean, uh, we know the challenges the district has gone through. And then having three board members up for reelection in November and all being reelected, uh, that, that was pretty significant. It says a lot about how the community feels about the work that the school board has done. So I say thank you to all of you and appreciate working with you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
So I'd just like to, uh, say I really appreciate, um, you know, being in the school district and working as a school board director is really an honor, but it, uh, you know, it's got so, we have so many great things that are happening in our district and so many great employees and students and, you know, just from top to bottom, everybody that makes this place really special. But, um, I want to thank all of the schools for the posters. It's always one of my favorite things to come and watch all the creative creativity that the schools do to appreciate us. It's been nice to kind of see some of the reader boards at the school districts and schools and see our sign. Um, and I know that, uh, this is one of Victoria's, uh, favorite meetings to be at because she loves seeing the posters and she loves hearing the kids sing. Um, it's always a special treat whenever we get a performance. But I also want to say maybe thank you to the school board members of the past that we've had that have really helped shape the district over the years. Um, the ones that I had worked with, Joan Skelton, Michael Parsons, Todd, Musaria, um, excellent mentors and people that, you know, have just kind of passed the torch along for the rest of us to do this important work.
I agree. So thank you.
Thank you.
Can't really say much after all that, Julie.
Oh.
But thank you. I would also like to say thank you to Julie for continuing to lead us
Thanks, Julie.
in a positive direction. And I also agree with Mike that we have a really strong team. And I look forward to at least two more years together.
Maybe I'll think of a way in the next month to come up with six or seven more tweets like last year. Because I appreciate the opportunity to work and serve in this capacity, but the biggest component of that is appreciating the good people of the system who do the work on the ground and, uh, knowing that we get a chance to support them. Uh, the strong point arts programs, the support of community, uh, just the heart for children that I keep seeing every time we go into schools, a new curriculum and where the people are responding to it and using it to help kids learn. We saw first graders, saw first grader copying Tiptons out of a book, you know, finding the sounds. Uh, we didn't do that until we were in the second, third grade. It's, I appreciate them. Appreciate them right back. Thank you so much for these posters and for the esteem. Uh, thank you also for the good work that you do.
All right. So I guess we'll move on, and I'm going to take some time at the end of the meeting. I know to go around and read through all the posters. Like, this one does make me smile when I look at it, when I'm on my screen. If you get a chance to come up and look at it up close.
It's his favorite.
It's classic.
Yep, it's, it's awesome.
I told him it was the best thing that I saw all day.
It was a slow day.
There's lots of things in banking to see throughout the day, so, but that was the best.
That's awesome.
Yeah. All right. So, uh, we'll go ahead and move on to our board consent agenda. Will entertain a motion?
I move that we adopt the board consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Uh, move to second. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Then we will move on to our superintendent consent agenda. Again, we'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the superintendent's consent agenda.
Second.
Uh, move to second. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Next is the superintendent report. So we'll turn this over to Superintendent Romino.
Quick, uh, update on a few things. Uh, Rob did mention that there were a few of us that were able to head over to BBC a week or so ago and have an opportunity to see the Fontesympanale, new reading curriculum, uh, being used. Uh, I think we spent about an hour and a half in classrooms that day. I'm sure you'll talk about your experience. I think the thing for me is just the positive reception that it has received. And, uh, as a board in the middle of difficult budget cuts, to still make that a priority, which clearly it should have been a priority, uh, just shows the good work that the school board's done. And in, it's really helping advance things. So that was great to see that. And honestly, to see the kids be so interactive and so involved and having so many different materials and tools that they could use was, uh, awesome. We have had a few, uh, we've been having ongoing conversations around the next iteration of the LIFT. Uh, so we're still vetting things in terms of the numbers of devices and how we're going to roll those out. I think we got another meeting or two with some curriculum folks. Next month, we'll come back to one of the workshops and kind of have a presentation around, a conversation around the thoughts as we move into, uh, the 2021 school year. Uh, we, we have some decisions around refreshing devices. And so we will have some of that buttoned up and have a conversation more likely than not at the first meeting in February in workshop to discuss that. Uh, today, I went to Hearthwood and met with Tracy Schuster. It was the last of the elementary school visits that had been rescheduled maybe about four or five times, maybe six or seven times, maybe eight times when I went to Lori. Uh, for various reasons, things happened at school or things happened with the schedule. Uh, so I'm really pleased that I had the opportunity to be in all the elementary schools, uh, visit with the principals, kind of hear the, you know, hear the positive feedback in some of the areas we need to work on and what areas we can support them and try to help the system, support the buildings more than that we are even now. Uh, looked, uh, spent a lot of time going into special ed classrooms and had a great time doing that. Uh, the next week or two, uh, I think I'm going to be in all the middle schools to visit with the middle school principals, met with Heather Teason at Pacific last week. That was a nice visit. So it's, it's been great getting out to the buildings. Uh, and I would, I guess the last thing I would mention really quickly, we had Faith-Based Breakfast Wednesday, which was wonderful. Uh, and it was a room full of folks that are there to support kids, which we do on a daily basis. I made the point with them that, uh, all the work that they do has helped us get to, you know, along with many, many others, along with John Dieter's vision of 100% graduation rate, along with staff at the high school where it was kind of initially championed, but throughout the system, as well as the faith-based partners providing supports for kids so that they can learn when they're in school, but getting the graduation rate to 91.3%, which is well above the state average and very high within districts our size. Um, that was great. But then after that, went to HILA, the Columbia River Economic Development Council had a, there's an education committee that we've been going out and meeting at various high school, or various school districts and kind of hearing about SCL work and equity work in the, in the buildings, uh, in the districts throughout Clark County. Uh, and then we had the good fortune to have HILA students do another one of their, um, tours. It was, we didn't really tour the building as much as they, just kind of talked about the programs that they, uh, work on. And if, if folks have any, ever have an opportunity to go visit HILA and, and think about, and it's not just HILA, it happens everywhere, but think about the work that's being done in our school district in preparing kids for the future. And just even just standing in front of a group of people that could maybe be intimidating and then just talking about their experience, why did they go to HILA? Uh, what did they learn in school? What kinds of programs were they, were projects are they working on? What kind of internship opportunities did they have? Uh, it was great. Every, every time you go there, you, you see that. So I think, um, the committee was very impressed with what they saw at HILA, and I think probably will schedule, we didn't have a lot of time to actually tour the building. We saw the nursing suite. Uh, but my sense would be that they'll ask to come back just so we can actually tour the facility and see some of the other programs. So it's been a great couple of weeks. And I talked about the next two weeks, but I don't know necessarily what I'm doing tomorrow. Um, because there's always so much going on, and then you show up and, and things change every day. So it's good. We got a lot of stuff going on.
All right. Thank you, Mike. All right. Next is monitoring district operations. First is operational expectations, OE5 financial planning. This is a first reading.
This is a first reading, yes. So what we have here is, um, within the OEs, OE5 financial planning, which is primarily built around how do we build budgets? And what we did in workshop a couple of weeks ago was kind of look at the board's policies and make recommendations to the board from the perspective of the policies that they have. Um, generally, this is around how do we build budgets in the district? Uh, one of the recommendations was to, uh, we had in the, in the OE5, uh, the development of a document that kind of looked at how do we spend money within all of the different OEs? Whether that was, uh, how do we manage our facilities? How do we, uh, manage hiring, uh, staff within the personnel department? Any number of them. But, um, the recommendation was to really rely more upon the, the budget document as opposed to that document, because we spent a lot of time tracking, a lot of the OEs we don't spend a lot of money in. We spend most of our money within the, the learning environment OE. And so focusing more on, on, um, those kinds of conversations. So we've eliminated the first, uh, bullet item talking about in a different summary format. Um, we continue with that the superintendent will develop a budget that credibly describes revenues and expenditures, shows the amount spent in each budget category for the most recently completed fiscal year, the amount budgeted for the current fiscal year, and the amount budgeted for the next fiscal year. We disclose budget planning assumptions, which are primarily around enrollment and salary increases for our staff. Those are the largest ones. Uh, assuring fiscal soundness in future years continues, and that's primarily around the F-195. The F-195 is a document, the state budget document, but we also have a five-year projection that we have to do with that, so we'll continue to do that. Um, we had another line item that said specifically reflects anticipated changes in employee compensation, including inflationary adjustments, step increases, and benefit increases. That's really more in the assumption document that we have. So we eliminated that for, so there wasn't duplication. And then we had a bullet in there that talks specifically about having, um, identifying how much money is spent on the board's budget, the board directors, uh, which is actually within the budget document, the F-195, that we provide to the state. And again, the amount of money that's in the board budget, uh, is very minimal compared to a $380 million budget and pretty well prescribed around, we have to spend money on audit fees, and we have to spend money on attorney's fees through that. So, um, we're just eliminating that so that it still shows within the main budget. And then the last thing is, uh, the superintendent may not develop a budget that, uh, we had originally had language in there saying we would not allow a budget to be built that showed more expenditures than revenues. So it needed to be a balanced budget. Of course, understanding that you have a fund balance that arguably could, you, you could use to offset more expenditures than revenues. But what we did was we, we left the language in, but we added without board approval. So we still, we could present, I could present a budget that showed greater expenditures than revenues as long as the board approves of it and the board's part of the conversation, really similar to what the conversation was that we had in the spring around building the budget for the 1920 school year. So those, those are the changes. We talked about those in workshop last week. So at this time, I recommend that the board accepts the proposed, proposed revisions for OE5 financial planning as presented for first reading and move it forward for a second reading and approval.
Great. Thank you. So at this time, we'll ask for questions or comments from the audience. All right. Seeing none, we'll call for a motion from the board.
I move the board accepts the proposed revisions for operational expectations OE5 financial planning as presented for first reading and move it forward for a second reading and approval.
Second.
All right. So I'm moving second. And now we'll open it up to the board to ask questions.
So during workshop, um, last time, we discussed removing the word credibly from the new number one. It's still in there, so I would still like to see that word removed. I don't think it's appropriate in the context.
I think we were just going to strike it, right? And then just
I think so.
And then just leave it.
So it's striking.
So that it reads, describes revenues and expenditures?
Yeah, we'll develop a budget that describes revenues and expenditures. It's, yeah.
Did you want the incredibly? Incredibly?
Not believably. Believably described. Believably described.
Okay. We make that adjustment. We'll bring that back.
Believably does connote something that has never been, never been the case with budget development as long as I can remember in this district. I go back a couple of years. So, yeah.
Yeah, that's the only thing I see that's different than what we discussed last time.
No.
I bet you caught that, because you do remember something that
I was saying that as a, as an adjustment to the document.
Would you do that?
I would just suggest looking at the, um, the numbering.
One, two, three, four, five, six.
It's not the numbering, it's the punctuation around the numbering. There's a period before the one and then a, or a comma after the one. And then there's a period before the six.
Okay.
And there's no period after the And, yeah, and no period after the three.
I think they might have already corrected.
Remembering the original.
Revised or the
We have a
We're both looking at
I'm looking at the revised and then the updated. He's looking at the original one.
Now that I see it, I'm, yeah, I'm wrong.
I also
Needs a bit of approval.
I also feel like this was one that we discussed early on, like last summer, and we brought it back to workshop a couple of times. So, um, with just Rachel's recommendation for removing that word and then just cleaning up a little bit of punctuation, I think we are probably good to move it forward.
Yeah.
Yep.
Perfect.
All right. So any other questions or comments?
Nope. Just need to move to approve as amended instead, which I just did.
All second.
Yep.
All right. So then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Opposed? All right. So we'll bring that back as a second reading on February 11th.
Perfect.
All right. So then the next one, under monitoring district operations, part B, is, uh, the financial planning interpretation and indicators.
Yes. So this is what trails the policy. And so what we've done is strike through 5.1 since 5.1 was eliminated. Uh, 5.2, we would change then. The superintendent will develop a budget that describes revenues and expenditures as opposed to having credibly, we'll remove that. But the, uh, indicators of compliance and evidence, uh, remain the same. Uh, they remain the same in 5.3. And in 5.4, I think the only other thing we do is eliminate 5.6 and 5.7 like we eliminated 5.1 and then change the language in 5.1. But the evidence doesn't change and the interpretation doesn't change. Basically, all we do is mirror the policy, um, and leave the evidence the same. And so with that being said, I would recommend that the board accepts the proposed revisions for OE5 financial planning financial planning interpretation and indicators as presented for first reading and move it forward for a second reading and approval.
All right, thank you, Mike. At this time, is there any questions or comments from the audience? All right, then we will call for a motion from the board. I move the board accepts the proposed revisions for operational expectations OE5 financial planning and interpretation and indicators as presented for first reading and move it forward for second reading and approval.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Open up to the board for questions or comments? I don't have nothing to change.
Nothing except another expression of appreciation for, yeah. For the work and the added clarity that we're getting through the process.
Okay, well then we'll go ahead and take a vote to move it forward to a second reading. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So that will come forward on February 11th for a second reading. And we'll just have to change that one word in the.
Yep.
Okay. All right, now it's good, our time for the good news. Gail Spohler, our executive director of communications, will come forward and tell us all of the good news.
Good news is there's a lot of glitter on the carpet. If you, online on the internet, if you put on the.
It's telling us we need to ask you permission or it's telling me.
Same here. We're not allowed access.
Okay, well, I'll tell you, once we go back and give you permission, I will tell you some highlights.
Is this a way for us to make sure we're making eye contact with you?
And not the glitter.
Good strategy.
So Bridge Creek Elementary came up with the idea of homerooms as a way to create community and give students a sense of belonging. These are multi-age groups that meet once or twice a month with planned activities to build inclusion and cooperation within the school. So in December, the students, staff, and family met for hot chocolate, then they sang songs and placed door hangers decorated by their homeroom groups throughout the BBC neighborhood. So I don't know, did you get one?
No, I live in the BBC neighborhood.
Okay.
Just outside.
It sounded like, they had a great time. I have pictures. They were kind of dark, but they had a great time. As you know, our faith-based partners are wonderful and Cascade Park Baptist Church, prior to the holidays, donated 30 pairs of shoes to Riverview Elementary. And then also followed that up with a generous donation of gift cards to Wimco for those families as well. Giving Group Realty, a local firm, donated about $700 to the family and community resource centers. They have a program where their clients can select a charity of their choice to give a donation to. And so clients Thomas and Andrea selected the FCRC programs to receive their donation based on their house sale. Millplains Elementary spent November and December promoting compassion by encouraging staff and students to participate in the helping others food and personal hygiene drive. The result, they collected 30 boxes of items for distribution within the Millplain neighborhood. Over at Furcrest, they also collected food and household essentials and they collected, so they each have different ways of counting, 30 boxes at Millplain. At Furcrest, they counted the items and they were almost at 6,800 items. In fact, 6,792 to be exact. And that helped 80 of the families within their neighborhood. The Portland Timbers and Portland Thorns mascot Timber Joey recently visited Burton Elementary, answered questions, posed for pictures. But more importantly, Timber Joey brings a discussion about the importance of perseverance when overcoming learning challenges. And then he spends significant amount of time, about an hour reading, to answer questions. So that was Burton Elementary receiving that. Presentation at Mountain View High School recently was done by Mayor Vancouver Ann McLeary Ogle. She focused on voting and voter rights. And she encouraged and informed the students about their civic rights and encouraged them to register to vote when they reached that appropriate age of 18. Right before winter break, every Ellsworth student was allowed to walk down the hall, they had them all out on tables and choose their very own book to take home and enjoy. And that was courtesy of the fundraising at the school's PTO. If you didn't see the pictures on Facebook, the like, all those students were so excited to choose the book and then be able to take it home. Our CTE group recently received a state high demand career and technical education grant for nearly $24,000. They are purchasing equipment for Hila and that new equipment will be used to support the development of skills the students need in order to acquire their CNA license. And finally, congratulations to a number of our teachers who joined the ranks of our national board certified teacher ranks. William Garter, Anne Marie Taylor, Susha Pratt, Laka Marki, Alyssa Kisi, Amy Latton, Tina Slaughter, Brandon Angelo, Erin Caliber, and Julia Roberts. They recently received notification that they are now national board certified teachers. And that is the good news and I will, as well as some others, and I will go back and see if I can open up the link for you so you can go ahead. But there's a lot of pictures as well.
Thank you. And you're right, a lot of them, we've seen some of the pictures on Facebook, lots of good stuff that happened over the last couple of months.
Do you need permission?
Yeah, I need permission.
All right, how about a budget update?
Yes, how about one? So I provided you with, the board, with two documents that we've shared for actually quite some time. The first being one around financial indicators and it looks at what we had budgeted for staff around very, the elementary, middle, and high school levels, what the average is year-to-date and then what the estimate will be for the year. And so when we look at, I think the first time we got together in September, of course, when you're looking at the estimates in September for the year, you're only 10% of the way in terms of enrollment, so it's a significant guess. But at that point, I think the thought was we were going to be fairly close to what we had budgeted. As we, and what I do is look at kind of his history, you know, what's the, what does the trend look like in previous years? And if we apply those trends to the current year, what do we think we're going to look like? Well, we were looking relatively close to what we had budgeted and of course, understanding that we're talking around a number of 20, over 24,000 kids. At this point in time, I'm estimating between elementary, middle, and high school will be about 108 kids below that. So 24,000, you know, you're talking less than a half of a percent, which is probably pretty good. But unfortunately, whenever you're under what you had budgeted, that's revenue that doesn't come in to support everything that you're doing. So when you put that into context, 108 kids is probably somewhere between 900,000 and a million dollars. Again, which isn't a huge number out of $380 million budget. But our, we'll talk to the next page around fund balance. Our fund balance is in the low 20 million. So a million dollars can mean something within that context. Overall enrollment, and you can see on that document, middle, high school, middle, elementary, and high school are within about 100. Our alternative programs, Legacy, within about 40 of where we're at, CTE, a little over what we had budgeted, Special Ed is really tracking very closely. ELL is tracking very closely. And you can see down below then where, how that translates into what allocation was made available to the buildings based upon the enrollment that we have and then where are we at. Overall, we've allocated a little less than 1,183 teaching positions and we, our actual staff, when I say that what we've allocated, that's what the budget, the number of students in the actual count would allocate, right around 1,183 and we're just below 1,192. So we're about eight and a half over what we had budgeted. And again, that dollar amount is, it kind of tracks with that roughly 900,000 to a million in terms of revenue, in terms of being over in expenditure as well. Within Special Ed, you can see we've, we're a little under in what we had budgeted for certificated staff, a little over in classified staff. So it gives you some context. The big thing for me is any wild swings there would be a problem. I mean, 100 kids is 100 kids, but it's not like it's 500. I mean, that's when you start getting into pretty significant problems. As we start work building next year's budget, what we've seen for the last really three years enrollment-wise is enrollment declines. We have work from our demographer that shows, you know, stable, if not, not increasing, but it's pretty stable rates. But as, when I start building, which we started working on enrollment for next year, typically, we don't do this until February, but we have a middle school change next year. And so we've actually started a middle school schedule change. So we're trying to get ahead of that and give our principals as much time as possible to start work through that process. And with that, we've also started looking at elementary and high school enrollment. And so I think it's reasonable to expect that we'll have another enrollment decline again next year. I have worked on finalizing those numbers, but I'm working on those. Probably we'll wait next, let's say it's the 21st, we'll get another count February 1st. We'll start working with the middle school principals now, but we'll wait until we get that February enrollment, then we'll start rolling that out mid-February with elementary school and high school staff, administration as well, so they can start working through. But I think it's reasonable to expect that we will see another enrollment decline as we're building the budget for 2021 in the 2, 3, 4, 500 range district-wide. But I think at every level, we'll see a little bit of that. And primarily, that's because for the last several years, we've seen smaller kindergarten classes coming into the system. And the smaller kindergarten classes come into the system and larger high schools move out of the system. It's going to follow that way. The second document that you have, what I've also talked about is through the year, I do estimates in terms of what do I think our ending fund balance is going to be. And it really is a almost a line-by-line estimate of revenue and expenditure. Within the expenditure side, I look at major programs, the basic education programs, special ed programs, the ELL programs and transportation. Those are really the main ones that are the most variable. Some of the other programs like CTE, LAP, federal grant programs, the grants kind of cap how much money is going to be spent in those. CTE has kind of a cap on what they spend, same with LAP. But those other programs are ones that can vary. So what I do is really kind of starting in November, I start looking at, once November payroll's done. And again, the further you get into the year, you have a better, you have a better trap on what's going on and understanding the path of where we're going to be. The second document shows what the original budget was. We had originally budgeted for a reserve a little below 23 million starting the year. And then we had budgeted to spend about 2.3 million or so of that fund balance to go down to 19.5, 19.6 million. The middle column on the document shows where we are as of December, shows kind of a lower fund balance. But two of the things that happened to help us balance our budget for 1921 was, remember Senator Cleveland provided some additional levy equalization funds through her vote. Those funds don't come to us until the spring. So those revenues start in April, coming, March, April, coming to us. And then the second is the technology levy that the voters passed in 2019 doesn't start being collected until the spring of 2020. So none of that has started showing up yet. All of that will start coming in the spring as well as an increased operations levy. So that, that's how, when we get to the ending, our actual, we had budgeted for 22.8 million. We ended up a little below 23.2 million in beginning fund balance. So we're pretty close in terms of what we had budgeted. And right now, I'm estimating that that balance come down by somewhere around 700,000-ish. Will, will, it's, we had predicted a larger decrease in fund balance. I think that we'll probably be closer to the 700,000 range. The board has a policy, a specific work policy saying that we should have a 5% reserve. We're still meeting that guideline, but as the budget gets bigger, it's based upon the previous year's expenditures. So every year we spend more money, the reserve needs to continue to increase. So you can spend reserves for a period of time, but at some point, we need to, we need to have that. We just need to be on top of that conversation. And we've talked a little bit about that. And maybe even looking at that policy, we've been talking for probably a little more than six months about, or even a year, and looking at maybe some technical changes to the policy. We'll probably do that again in the spring before we get to closing this year's books. But we'll continue to work on that. So overall, honestly, the budget for 1920 is really tracking for the most part what we had expected when we went through the process last spring. I think we cut the appropriate amount, unfortunately, the appropriate amount. I think our district has been a district that has tried to be as accurate as possible and kind of allow the margins to get a little lower to protect programs. You might see much larger fund balances in other large school districts in the state. I think you definitely would see that. We'll see those numbers as OSPI starts publishing those documents here in the spring. We've tried to be, I think, a little more aggressive to protect programs and we'll continue to work hard to make sure that we're as accurate as possible. Myself and everyone that I work with to try to protect the programs and what's going on in our district. That's my budget presentation.
Any questions? How many, so how many students did we decline last year? Was it around the same amount, 100?
You mean last year?
Well, I'm just trying to.
So when you say last year, did you mean last year?
Like last school year?
So when I look at the, I'm not going to give you total by the total district count, but if I'm looking at what we use to kind of sap our elementary, middle, and high schools, in 1718, we were at 24,228. The estimate for this year is around 23,400-ish. So that's about 800 kids over the last two years. The overall number would show a bigger decline when you go back because we used to have an Internet Academy that was counting, we had kids from around the whole state. And then we, a few years ago, switched that so that we were focused primarily just on kids in our own district. So that probably eliminated five, four, five, 600 kids, something like that. So that 23, 400 is going to probably be in the upper 22s to low 23s. Again, that's not the total. It doesn't, I mean, our total district number is more around 24 and a half to 25,000 kids because that includes Running Start, includes more of the Skill Center and some of the other things that we have. But you're talking, you know, well over 1,000 kids in a couple of two, three year period.
Because it sounds like we're similar to other districts in our area.
Yeah.
Declining enrollment. And I'm imagining that's probably statewide.
I think it's a nationwide.
Nationwide.
Fewer. Fewer children born and therefore entering kindergarten five, six years later than before. The population growth rate is getting to be uneven.
Yeah. And I think that there's been, so there is still some growth in the county, like there's been a lot of growth in Ridgefield. There's probably moderated growth in Camas. But I think you're right. Most districts are seeing a little bit of a decline and I think it is statewide. I agree with that as well.
Sometimes I wonder about the private school, if their enrollment has increased, but.
I think, I think typically the thought process is, is the economy does better, the private school enrollments increase and as the economy struggles, that some of those students end up coming back to public education. I, we can look at that. It also kind of depends on whether, like the high schools, high schools can grow. Some of those, some of those schools are maybe capped on how many kids they can really accept.
Well, we've had several that have been built too in the last, you know, several years, the new high school, Seaton and stuff. So I'm just wondering maybe, I'm just curious about enrollment at private schools versus. So I'm just wondering maybe, I'm, I'm just curious about enrollment at private schools versus.
Yeah, we can cut out, we can look into that.
Seems like there's one or two more. Manahouse Church is now running a school where Seaton used to be. It's a private K-12 school and I think there's a couple others. But, uh, I, I really think that people are having their kids later and they're.
And that could be too, probably less kids were born during the recession. So just an interesting trend, so.
So we, we see a total FTE count for the district in the twenty-five thousands that will translate downward to the high twenty-fours. But it's not a number you pull out of this document.
The document that, uh, no, I mean, the ones that you see is really the ones, because you've got ALE, that's its own entity. You've got the Skill Center, that's kind of its own. And then you've also got Running Start, which is, you know, between those three programs, you're talking somewhere around, you know, fifteen hundred kids, fourteen, fifteen hundred kids. You've got, we've got almost four hundred to four hundred and fifty Running Start kids. You've got six hundred Skill Center kids. And you've got three hundred and fifty to four hundred and fifty ALE students. And then also there's kids, um, in the transition program that count that we have. There, so there are, there are probably another fifteen hundred, I would say, on top of that. So we'll probably be in the mid-twenty-fours, I would be suspecting when you get to the total number for the district after we think about budgeting for next year.
I, I, then the comment that I have is, has to do with the legislation that WASC has been watching just in the first week. Uh, we can get into more detail, but there are some, uh, there are some policy changes that could affect how we count enrollment and, and, uh, thinking specifically of the changes to community college, uh, the greater costs imposed by a proposed mandate that we supply through the budget somehow. It doesn't say in the bill, all of the M-SOC materials for.
To the community college?
Well, uh, yeah, it kind of seems like nobody knows whose books that will go through. Kind of like whose books do the healthcare things go through with respect to SED. Um, just, uh, some things to be thoughtful about. Just, I don't know what the side effects are going to be, but they're proposing some pretty significant, if, if the dollar count is low. There's also some things about Running Start that could take them off the district's books altogether if they choose to interpret the language that way. And then there wouldn't be students in the district, they'd be getting their high school degrees from the community colleges. Those are the kinds of things that I'm beginning to see come through the first few weeks of the session.
We have a call every week, uh, with our lobbyists and, uh, there are a lot of them. And I think the first cut is like next, in the early February or something where some of these bills start dropping off, so we'll have to watch that. She hasn't really talked a lot about that because most of what the legislature's education, we've spent a lot of time on education, we're not going to spend much time on it this session. But we do have to keep an eye on it because those will be significant.
All right, thank you. All right, next up is board comments, comments by the school board.
Thank you for showing us the reading curriculum. Need to say that again. I saw what looked to me like some really professionally, you know, you need a professional for this kind of pedagogy that they were teaching. And it really looked like there was a lot of preparation that went on before class to, like, arrange which words in the book were concealed and drive the discussion with, uh, the correct essential questions for the particular group of kids. And, and what really came out of that is, we talked about it going through the schools, is that we've got a really good set of books that, uh, for the first time, they say, has a focus on equity. There are books for kids of all ethnicities and backgrounds in the eight-hundred book collection. And they sort them by subjects and things. I, you know, I don't have the, uh, curriculum director's picture of all of it, but what I saw was neat. That and the little six-year-old who was doing phonics that I didn't do until second grade was, I guess, continue to not fear the future of kids like that coming through the schools, you know? That was neat.
What I saw was a lot of kids that were really enthusiastic about reading.
Yeah.
You know, um, I've been in classrooms and watching them doing, you know, the group read and then reading on their own. And then I had, I had students that were wanting to read to me, um, which was a lot of fun. And they were really excited about their, whatever they were reading. Because there was like, what Bob said, there was, you know, something for everybody. And so it made them want to read. And I think that's kind of really important to our kids to read for fun, read because you want to and, and enjoy it.
Yeah, I don't remember whether you, you had to leave before this. One of the conversations that we had was about, um, a teacher. And I think she was the one who was leading us around, something like that, who was able to select for the classroom and, you know, wasn't overly invested in the actual content of the books or something, saw kids' eyes just light up and come up and thank her for this one book about, you know, whatever the subject was, I think it was like a kitchen kind of story with a mom and stuff. But they found something for that child to take in interest and get excited about what they were doing. And, you know, in the process, we end up teaching them how to parse phonically and, and, uh, read closely and everything because they had that happy thought first. That's really exciting to see, just neat. Interesting, in the faith partner breakfast, we had our discussion group after all the speeches and presentations and, uh, the question that we chose at our table was, uh, what are we missing? What big problems still exist? And, uh, I guess the two things that came out of that discussion for me was that people in these faith-based groups have really begun to see how excellent, uh, the educational program in the schools really are and excited to come in and serve. Uh, but they're also stepping in during summer times and school breaks, uh, in ways that they hadn't before. And some of that is really institutionalizing, um, supports for kids when school's out. Really just kind of evidence of, uh, the trajectory that we're on. We started six years ago by convening that in this end of town. I'm glad to see that it's still going and that it's going strong.
I would agree with that. Um, you know, the faith-based breakfast and that program and Melanie Green and the work that she's done with, um, was it Clark Public Health that is the partner with us on that? That has brought all of those groups together to support our schools and students? It's really evolved over, like, how many years have they been doing it? Did they say four or five or?
I think they were doing it on the west side for eight years and on the east side for six or seven. When we, when we had the first breakfast six years ago, uh, it had just started a few months before, yeah.
And so, um, maybe for those that you don't, that don't know, but the, the breakfast is the one-year kickoff. And then every month they have a meeting where they bring in different topics and, and the partners there with our, with our school partners and they find ways that we can better serve kids. Um, there's a variety of topics month to month, but I'm always amazed at the way that our faith-based partners come into the schools and they find really creative ways to solve problems, um, for student need. And they just, if there's a need, they find a way and they, do they do the work? And, um, I was really inspired by some of the stories that we heard from, um, that young man that was there that kind of did his presentation. I can't remember what school he worked with, but was he working with a regular high school? But he, um, talked about helping one helps, helps all.
Yeah.
And so it's kind of an important message, but, um, good reminders.
Then I knew a Hila graduate.
Yeah.
And I remembered her from, you know, I saw her name on her name tag, it was a pretty unique name, but she, uh, she now works for a little small business, she wrote the copy. And, and, uh, works as a community engagement person for, um, Dutch Brothers. Dutch Bros, Dutch Brothers? Not a copywriter, so, sorry about that. But, uh, and I thought about, you know, her path from, you know, being a science, person interested in science and going to Hila and now in this community relations kind of role. And it's, uh, example of, you know, prepared for the next step in life, committed to the common good, motivated to keep going. Yes. Realization that the results policies are kind of dialed in. This is what we want for our kids and just an example of that. Not everybody saw it, it was nice to see her, nice to see her happy and doing something important. Let's see, I, I was at Leadership Clark County's, um, I can't remember what they called that day. With all the political leaders coming into. The government, yeah, the government day. Ended up, no fewer than four of those, the members of those classes, of that class saying, I need to get with you for, and then around some equity issue or some, um, thing that they can provide to the schools or they want to dialogue some more and see how they can help some more. And I've got the names for that and share those when the time's appropriate. Just kind of waiting for them to reach out. They've all got my email and Mike's email now. Uh, that was a good day. And I think I came away with people having a pretty good impression of schools and government in general. That's a really good introduction to the, the way the county works. And then, uh, yeah, the rest is legislative.
All right, anything else? That's before a day got canceled because of the two-hour late start? Dang it. My fault, my fault.
I'll be anxious about the only day scheduled that's supposed to be going on, so I had nothing.
All right, uh, future agenda items? Do we want to break forward? All right, so then next is citizen comments. If there's anybody in the audience that wishes to address the board, it looks like we might have a sign-up sheet. All right, so if there is anyone in the audience that wishes to address the board, who'll come up to the podium, they'll have three minutes. Um, remember your comments cannot be personnel-related or about an individual employee or student and are not legal in nature. Um, looks like we have Heather Sohaki. Sohaki. Come on up Heather, give us your, um, address please and name and address.
Um, I have a letter that's developed, so I apologize if I missed. My name is Heather Sohaki, looks like Sochaki. It's my, uh, address is seven-one-six Northwest One Hundred Fifty-eighth Street, Vancouver, Washington, nine-eight-six-eight-five. This is my authentic make. I want to thank you, but this, can you hear me if I stand up? Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity to share my voice. I recognize this is a privilege. I would like to just speak briefly about equity and diversity, culture and education. I currently teach seventh grade humanities at Y East Middle School. I teach a four-period day and that will change next year as the middle school schedule changes. This is my fifth teaching position, fourth public school, second state, second country, third district, but by far the most supportive administration for me in eighteen years. The programs in place at Y East are designed to support students and educators. They're fast and like our community, changing and evolving. My analogy for Y East is that I'm a smartphone. Each time we speak up and voice a need for something, lo and behold, there's an app for that. It's workshopped and designed by staff, students, facilitators, and borne out by research. Our focus at Y East is to ensure that students and colleagues are known, loved and challenged. And this could be a pretty trite phrase for T-shirt, but it isn't. Relationships are key to the plan for student success at Y East. And our administration invests in relationships. Both our advocates and our security are essential to building and maintaining three-year-long relationships at Y East. Advocates conduct workshops, meetings, professional student goal settings, and facilitate restorative conferences. Our goal is to keep students learning. Sending students out of class sends a message that they are not wanted. Calling for, I'm sorry, support staff brings an advocate, security or admin to ask the question, how can I help you? This often leads to a quick chat, brisk walk, an opportunity for me to listen to or chat quietly and privately with a student outside. A quick reset and back-to-learning, no lost academic time, no write-ups, no residual resentment that lasts for weeks. I feel supported, students feel supported, they feel known, seen, challenged. Advocates and security may seem luxurious, superfluous, yet they're so worth the investment and a huge part of our culture at Y East. PBIS is about dignity, finding balance, challenging each other to engage in difficult discussions and misunderstandings about cultural expectations, unspoken rules and indicators of respect. This is not a top-down teacher-to-student program. PBIS requires risk-taking by students and staff. This is a program we have barely even tapped. A program and philosophy that requires continued commitment and focus for long-term success. It also requires trust, trust that administration is there for us, there. Trust that our vulnerability does not backfire on us. Culturally responsive teaching is an area of exploration for many teachers at Y East. Again, this area of study requires trust and vulnerability, much like me standing here. Sorry.
Melanie, do you apologize?
I'm sorry, this is ridiculous. Um, culturally responsive teaching is an area of exploration for many teachers at Y East. Requires trust and vulnerability, exposing ourselves in some of our less attractive, long-held cultural practices or beliefs. This work requires a personal reflection on our own biases and its impacts on our students. When I first moved to Vancouver, I was stunned to learn about the microclimates existing in such a relatively small town. Such a variety of climate in a town that spans just thirteen miles and twenty minutes from Ridgefield to Camas. Our neighborhoods and schools are similarly varied. Our district is a tapestry made up of numerous cultures and we are the better for it. So moving forward, nervous asking this, moving forward with changes in schedules, budget and staffing, I ask you to complicate, or complicate, contemplate, how will the school board work to know us, see us and challenge us? How will the school board work to support the equity work already occurring in classrooms, PLCs and buildings across the district? How will the school board work to expose and replace misguided district policies, practices, and practices that support the inequity that exists in those microclimates? Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. All right, next on the list is Bill Bevel. Hey, Bill.
Hi. Uh, Bill Bevel, one zero-zero-four Northwest Forty-third, Vancouver, Washington. Uh, I was directed by my executive board to, uh, compose a resolution around the Black Lives Matter at school, that's coming up in February. So I very promptly delegated this to my equity team. And, uh, and they did a magnificent job with my name on it. But, you know, we worked together on this and it's an exciting time. And I think it fits perfectly, um, with the report we just shared last week. Uh, it, it's nice to know that we're kind of moving in the same direction. Um, so the resolution states, uh, "Resolution Regarding Black Lives Matter at School. Whereas in response to both currently and historically racist treatment of African-Americans, a nationwide movement is growing to assert that Black Lives Matter" a nationwide movement is growing to assert that Black Lives Matter. And whereas Evergreen educators believe the lives of each and every one of our community members matters, which necessitates supporting specific marginalized groups such as African-Americans. And whereas in support of the movement, educators will come together to proclaim a week of action, affirmation, and solidarity to Black Lives Matter at school. And whereas the purpose of this support is to inspire, explore, and grapple with the past, present, and future status of Black Lives in our society, and to affirm those lives are equal to, not secondary to, the lives of others. And whereas schools should be places to practice anti-racism and equity for the building of understanding and for the active engagement to create pathways to freedom and justice for all people. And whereas numerous diverse community groups will support this week of education, reflection, dialogue, and action, and engaging in activities within Clark County that support the understandings and affirmations that underlie the Black Lives Matter movement. And whereas it is important for educators to publicly resist disinformation from white supremacist groups who mislead community members to bully supporters of Black Lives Matter. And whereas the Evergreen Education Association and Evergreen Public Schools seek to address institutional racism in our schools and offer spaces for dialogue among school staff by supporting and facilitating professional development work related to racial and social justice. Therefore, be it resolved that the Evergreen Education Association Representative Council endorses and encourages educators to participate in a week of action and solidarity with Black Lives Matter to be held from February 3rd to February 7th, 2020, dated the 13th day of January 2020." And I'd just also like to share, I think when this first came, I think when we first started to bring this, it felt like a very divisive thing. We know that we had members of the community come and speak for and against for the Black Lives Matter movement. I think that now, we, when we wrote this, we wrote it with very much of an intent for it to be very inclusive, that the purpose of Black Lives Matter at School is to make us realize what it would take to be an inclusive community, and make sure that we're going above and beyond to make our African-American students and community members feel welcome at our schools. Let me give this to you or Lori.
Thank you, Bill.
Would you like to see it?
All right, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the board this evening? All right, so at this time, we will go into a recess where the board will sign papers. We will reconvene for a board workshop in this room. We will do an attendance area parent committee update, operational expectations, OE12 on facilities. We'll have a legislative update. We're going to do a WASD board conference debrief, do another superintendent's update, and then a board meeting debrief. Then we'll head into an executive session where we'll have a real estate conversation, and then we'll review the performance of a public employee. Thank you.